Turn that on. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Porter County Board of Commissioners' first meeting of the year, Tuesday, January 10th, 2023. I was careful not to say 1923 because I did that in my last meeting. We'll start with reorganization. Out of the gate is for Board President.
I'll make a motion to elect Jim Biggs president, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Vice President. I nominate Barb Rigness as Vice President of the Board of Commissioners. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have the post of Secretary. I'd like to nominate Laura Blaney as Secretary to the Board of Commissioners. All those in favors, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. And we have the appointment of County Attorney, Scott McClure.
Motion to appoint Scott McClure County Attorney.
Second.
Second.
And we have two seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We'll go into consent agenda. Oh, wait, well, hold on here. We're... Could I ask Chuck Harris to come up? We have something. We're going to slide in here real quick that we neglected to do last year. Morning Chuck.
Morning.
Behind the microphone? This one?
This one, okay.
Sounds good. Wherever you're comfortable.
First of all, I want to thank the Commissioners for allowing me to come up here and say a few words about my friend. It's not unusual for Porter County to say goodbye to a longtime employee. County government works with a high rate of retention for its employees. When a venerable county veteran decides to call it a career, it's typically his or her decision, and it's cause for celebration. I know in my office, I have several people that have over 30 years of experience. However, most elected officials leave office due to elections, and it's rare to see a respected official walk away from his post on his own terms. However, that is precisely what John Snyder has done. More importantly, he did it for the right reasons. John and I first ran as candidates back in 2010, and we both won our first elections together. Over the course of the past 12 years, there were certainly challenges and obstacles, but John was always positive and set the tone for his office. Keeping morale high in the assessor's office is a little bit of a challenge because it's typically... The only interaction you have with the public is people that are complaining about their land values being a little bit too high and their assessments being too high. There was kind of a hype back when John was elected about his great attitude and enthusiasm. We've got a great department head that we're recognizing here, and there are a lot of great employees in the room from his department. I think a lot of the reason that there are great employees in that department is because John led with his enthusiasm and his leadership. The positive attitude he brought in that department still exists today. John is a good person. He's fair, and he's honest, and he cares about people. He cares about doing the right thing. He believes he can make a difference in the lives and circumstances in his community. And he truly enjoys helping people. When people had questions or concerns, like myself, he provided help, answers, guidance in a quick, complete, and in a non-judgmental type of way. John, you've been an inspiration for the last 12 years, knowing the things that you've faced and that you've accomplished. And I wanted you to know that you're going to be missed. For all your future endeavors, I want to wish you well, and if you ever want to stop by and have a talk or go out for lunch, you're more than welcome to, buddy. Absolutely.
Ask me to come up?
Well, thank you all. Thank you for coming or being here, one way or the other, whether you had to or not. Hi ladies. Thank you. This was a surprise. I've known about this over the weekend, and everybody that made it happen. I remember 12 years ago, leaving my house as the newly-elected county assessor. It was cold, a very cold morning, but a very clear sky. I'll never forget, I looked up in the sky and I asked God for help because I didn't know what I was doing, didn't know what I was getting into. And I will say that I do truly did feel God's presence in my life every day, each step of the way, and I'm just grateful for that opportunity, that I've had to be here. I'm thankful for God's help. I'm thankful for my family, and I'm extremely thankful for the employees. Thank you guys for coming in this morning. I was surprised because we were a team, and we faced many, many challenges over 12 years. But the team performed well. I was just lucky enough to be their manager, per se, and just made decisions to help them, try to help them to do better. And not only were we a team, we were family. And I miss you guys already. I miss you dearly, actually. So, most of everything about what we do, right? But thank you, everybody. I won't stand up here long. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Barb, I appreciate it, okay?
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, while we're on it, we have another elected official who doesn't have an award today, but very much the same, put his heart and soul into his job and didn't walk away because of an election. He was turned out, and that is Dave Reynolds. And he was a fantastic asset to Porter County for many years. So I'd like to recognize him as well.
I agree. And what I would also, I think what we're going to do is, on our agenda next month, or at the end of the month, our second meeting, we're going to invite the sheriff in for the same recognition award because Dave had... Dave served Porter County with distinction for 16 years and did a great job as sheriff. That's one of the more difficult jobs to do in county government. So, we're going to get him in here and recognize him properly. Okay, we can go into the consent agenda now, Millie.
Approval of payroll, December 9th, December 23rd, 2022, and January 6th, 2023. Approval of claims, December 8th, December 15th, 2022. Approval of minutes for December 6th, 2022. Treasurers Monthly Report, November 30th, 2022, filed. Waits and Measures Monthly Report, November 16th to December 15th, 2022, filed.
Thank you. Memorial Opera House, Scott McDonald.
The motion is second on the consent agenda.
Is this part of the consent agenda?
Do we need... Do we need a motion approval for the consent?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead, Scott. Sit down. I can argue a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Great. Now, Scott.
Good, how are you?
We have the artistic services agreement. Do you want to list down there who they are?
Sure. Sure. These are all for our upcoming production of Lucky Stiff. We have Michael Glorioso, Gillian Mahalik, Laura Gorsky, Julia Page Thorne, and Angela Hyde. And then for the 2023 season overall, for all five shows, we are going to bring on Megan Branham as a lighting designer. And then we have a venue rental agreement for Next Gen ALS, and they are presenting the Willie Nyle concert in June.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I bring something up while we're on MOH?
Sure.
You know, we've spent a lot of time, money on architects. We have money allocated from ARPA funds. We have money committed by the foundation. So I'd like to make a motion to put the MOH project as it stands out to bid.
There's no second. Motion fails due to a lack of a second. Okay. Announcements. We have citizens' appointments to the following boards. The Alcoholics Beverage Board. We have Bob Philip Heck.
Are you nominating him?
Yes, that's my nomination.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. We have Tourism Board appointment.
I think we each have one of those.
Yeah.
I'd like to nominate Kathy Brown to be reappointed.
Second. Whoa, 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 whoa.
She didn't get her application in on time, Jim.
Oh, she didn't have her application in on?
No.
Well, I would still like to nominate her. It would be her third or fourth term.
Well, that's not going to wash this out, is it?
It's going to wash out my two.
So you guys are... And historically, we have each had our own appointment to this board.
Okay, we'll continue with that and then do your other ones. What was your... Restate your motion, Laura.
I would like to nominate Kathy Brown to be reappointed to the Tourism Board.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
But they have to get their... They have to get their reappointments in, the notices. That's part of the rules. We have one more here.
Luke, that's yours.
Yeah. I'd like to reappoint Matt Soliday to the Tourism Board.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
I'd like to nominate Kay Ball to the Tourism Board. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. We move on to the... Let's see here. Plan Commission, one appointment. It's a Democrat affiliation.
I nominate Scott Williams.
Second.
I nominate Pam Fish.
All right. Sorry, it fails to the lack of a second. Mr. Williams's motion was seconded. So we have Mr. Williams's appointment with a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Scott Williams. Then we move down to Peter Boa, two appointments.
I nominate Tammy Bianco for reappointment.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
I nominate Nancy Colosa for reappointment.
Second. And she covers the requirement to have a Level 3 certification.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. And then we have the Redevelopment Commission, two appointments.
I nominate Jason Gilianna.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
I nominate Bill Herring.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. And Stormwater Advisory Committee, one appointment.
I nominate Nicole Baker.
I nominate Paul Reed.
I'll second the Nicole Baker appointment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have... We have... We also have three appointments to the Board of Health, but the deadline for that will be January 19th. So anybody thinking about wanting to sit on the Board of Health, you need to get your application in. New business. Commissioners. Commissioners' appointment to the following boards. Stormwater Board.
I nominate Jim Biggs.
Second. Those... Hang on just a second. Okay, we have a nominee, myself. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Community Corrections.
I nominate Jim Biggs.
Second.
Those... We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Juvenile Justice.
I nominate Jim Biggs.
Second.
Those... Those approved say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say aye. Motion approved. Redevelopment Commission.
I nominate Jim Biggs.
Second.
Those opposed... I mean, those approved say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say aye. Motion approved. Child Protection.
I nominate Laura Blaney.
I have historically not been able to make these meetings. So if someone else would like to take it that has a better schedule for this, I'm happy to give that one up.
Is that the case for Center for Workforce Development Innovations as well?
Yes, it is. And every year, I try to get one of you guys to take that. I've tried to do proxy, and due to legislation, that's not an available option.
I move that we postpone the nominations for these two until our next meeting.
Yes, because what we might do is, there's a couple that I have. If you want to... We could talk to see if you want to sit there and I'll...
Okay.
Okay? We'll shoot down to NERC. I motion to approve Barb Rigness to NERC.
I second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Plan Commission.
I'd like to be on this board. I nominate myself.
I nominate Barb Rigness.
I second.
Those approved say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say aye. EMA, Immersive Management Agency, I'd like to nominate Barb Rigness.
I second.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. 911, I could nominate Barb Rigness.
Second.
Second. Okay, we got a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
I don't see Nick D. on here, so I'd like to nominate myself.
Nick D. is appointed by the governor.
Oh, they changed that. That's right.
Yeah. Okay. We're going to shoot down here the Legal Services Agreement between Porter County Board of Commissioners and Green Elwood and McClure. We all got a copy of the contract. I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. An Amendment to Resolution 20-07 to approve the Commissioners' meeting schedule for 2023.
I move to approve.
Second. Yes.
Did we complete... I know there were a couple meetings. One was during spring break, and one was the Monday we come back from Thanksgiving that I thought might be kind of tough on the staff. Did we alter those all?
I don't believe we did. But I don't think it's out of the norm that we can address as we get closer to see if that's going to be an issue with anybody. I'll motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Approved. A request for approval by Jeremy Siskora to continue renting approximately 10 acres of county property for farming located at 303 West County Road 400 North on the west of the railroad tracks. Mr. Siskora has given the county a check in the amount of $3,600 for the calendar year of 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Sheriff Ballin, or the Sheriff's Department. Nothing. Okay. What's that?
We have a state school meeting.
Okay, thank you. Well, we have an ordinance, Amending Ordinance Number 20-08 Establishing a Non-Reverting Fund Number 8157 for the Indiana Department of Homeland Security State Homeland Grant Program awarded through a CFDA 97.067 DHS grant. This is actually the second reading. We approved it at the first reading.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. All fairness to the sheriff, you know, he didn't submit this. He probably... And you know what, Karen? I apologize. I should have... Your brand spanking new, and I should have acknowledged you here. I'm sorry. Our new county auditor, Karen Martin. JDC, Allison Cox, Director.
I'm Allison Tiber.
Hi. How are you? We have an agreement between the Porter County Board of Commissioners and the Board of Newton County, Indiana, for the housing of our children.
Are these two agreements the same as they happen?
They are. We also have one with Stark this year.
There have been some slight differences, but I reviewed them, and they are in basic keeping with what we've been doing in years past. I just don't think there's an automatic amount of beds.
The main difference is they're going to pay for beds as they go instead of paying a lump sum and then have a bunch of days to carry over and...
What is the daily rate?
$140.
$140. That's a bargain.
Can we do the two together that are...
Yes, you may.
Okay, we have an agreement with Newton County and an agreement with the county of Stark as well.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
The third one's a new agreement.
Stark is new.
Stark's the new one?
Well, Stark's the new one.
I'm going to change my motion to an agreement between the Board of County Board of Commissioners and the Board of Newton County, and also an agreement between us and the Board of Jasper County for the housing of children.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. And then we have an agreement with the county of Stark. Rental agreement, bed rental agreement as well.
Is it the same? Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Thank you. Auditor Karen Martin, Union Township ARPA agreement.
We received the one from Union Township, and I think it's within your packet, and shows the amount of $26,668.39. We are... We still do not have six of the townships, and we have two of the nonprofits that have filed their agreement, but this one has been submitted for your approval.
Is there a deadline for submitting those?
No, not really. They have a certain amount of time that they can work with it. It's not a specific deadline.
I move to approve the Union Township ARPA agreement.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Mr. Topol's right on top of it. This is in first. Highway Department, Jim Pelaric.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Morning, Eric. We have received open bids for our 2023 supplies.
First, we have limestone, and we have three bids. First one's from South Lake Stone, Harry Brown Trucking, Wyke Home Trucking.
I'm sorry, what was the third one?
Wickham.
Wickham Trucking.
Thank you.
This is the worst part of your job, Karen.
Well, she's open. We'll take these back down to the Highway Department after this meeting, and we'll lay them out so anybody that wants to come view them can come down there and view them. And then we'll review them and come up with a list and have it at your next meeting.
Well, just to be clear for the crowd, we have... These are limestone, so we have different sizes and...
Right. Yeah, it's not like you can just read off the...
There's not one magic number on this bid. There's delivered, not delivered.
Right, and all those bids are that way, so...
And that's why you're making them available for anyone.
Do you need to read them off?
No. You'll review and come back with your recommendations.
Correct. I'll... We'll go through them, and we'll review the numbers and be back in February.
So those are the three for limestone. We now have slag, beam, stove boyer, aggregate. We only had one.
This is interesting stuff, isn't it, folks? When we're done, we're going to go watch the water dry up on the ramp. It used to get two, but the one went bankrupt last year.
We now have liquid bituminous material and crack seal. We actually have six. We have central paving, pavement solutions, the clink cope, asphalt materials, Reith Riley Construction, Milestone Contractors North Incorporated. For the next area, we have pavement, striping, and markings, and we have the Air Marking Company. The next area that we have are rental rates for equipment. Number one, we have GE Marshall. We have Pavement Solutions Incorporated and Reith Riley Construction. And the Reith Riley Construction quote was in the same envelope as the liquid bituminous. Our next area of quotes are signs and signposts. We have one quote from Custom Products Company. The next area of quotes is calcium chloride products, and we have a quote from Great Lakes Chloride. We have diesel fuel. We have three quotes, one from Triple J Mar Petroleum, Coal Alliance, and Sarah's Solutions. We have diesel fuel, we have three quotes, one from Triple J Mar Petroleum, Coal Alliance and Sarah's Solutions. And Sarah's Solutions has three envelopes to be opened. The next area is culverts and guardrails, we have three quotes or bids. The first one is metal culverts incorporated, St. Regis Culverts Incorporated and Debco Metal Culverts. The last one is precast or pre-stressed bridge slabs and beams. And those are all the bids that were submitted.
Thank you, uh, Jim, you'll, you'll take these back and send them out for review, you'll review them yourself, come back with, uh.
Come back with, uh, recommendations and.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Uh, Development and Stormwater Management, Bob Thompson. Morning.
Morning.
Okay, we'll start, we, we have several items here, we'll start with, uh, rezone map amendment from IN Institutional District to R, R, R I, low, low-density single-family residential district petitioner Living Waters Ministry Corporation, Glenn Foreman, second reading.
Yes, this is where they requested to, um, downzone their property from the institutional to R1 zoning because they no longer wanted to continue with the church on this parcel and they wanted to have the parcel ready for residential.
Motion to approve on second reading.
I second.
We have a motion for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed same sign, motion approved. Now we have an ordinance, uh, for subdivision control, petitioner Porter County Department of Development and Stormwater Management, second reading.
This is where we were kind of cleaning up the language in the, under the administrative subdivisions where, um, they just talked about having a plat, we wanted a actual, I mean a survey, excuse me. And we wanted to have a plat and, so we're just cleaning up the language in this, so it's clear.
Okay.
I move to approve on second reading.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed same sign, motion approved. Uh, Demott State Bank Letter of Credit in the amount of 131,397 dollars for Stone Bridge subdivision Phase One and Two.
This is an extension of their performance agreement that they have with Stonebridge, um, the subdivision's on 500 East, just north of US 6. And the agreement is only for six months, we've asked it, they're getting very close to where they're completing it and moving forward to the maintenance agreement, but they still had some outstanding items that the staff in the office wants to, um, see to it to get done and they're running into the winter weather, so they were unable to do it, so we're, we asked for an extension.
Entertained a motion?
Motion to approve.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed same sign, motion approved. Uh, Lock Mueller Group, LPA Consulting Contract for Porter County Bridge 98, uh, over County Road 600 North and Salt Creek Replacement, the contract shall not exceed $34,000.
Motion. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I was just going to quickly explain, this was. This is for right-of-way services, um, Lock Mueller Group is doing the engineering currently on this and whenever we get into the, uh, right-of-way services, it's always a separate agreement, so this is what is before you.
Now I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed same sign, motion approved. We have, uh, annual service agreement, uh, from Lock Mueller Group. Speaks for itself, it's an annual service agreement.
Annual service agreement, we ask, um, we have a, you know, four or five consultants that we have on that, we ask for annual services agreements in case something comes up where we need to respond quickly.
I move to approve the Lock Mueller Group service agreement.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed same sign, motion approved. Uh, Valpo Solar LLC, Apex Clean Energy Inc., a consent agreement for, uh, roadway project for Bridge 40, right-of-way acquisition of Whitmer Parcel along 1,000 South at La Porte County Line.
Okay, um, this is, we're currently working on Bridge 40, we are in the middle of a right-of-way services agreement on that and we've purchased a number of parcels, this is one of the last parcels we have on this and they sent this into us, the Whitmers did, on that because we did approach the Whitmers, um, they're in the, um, northeast, no, northwest corner of that particular bridge, the bridge is right on county line. Apex Energy happens to have a lease agreement on this parcel, so what this is doing and I sat down with Attorney McClure on this is just basically, all parties are notified that Apex, even though we're approaching Whitmers to purchase right-of-way for this particular bridge and it's only a 30-foot, 40-foot strip in areas, that all parties are being notified, also that Apex Energy also has an interest in this parcel on that, um, but we're trying to purchase this right-of-way from Whitmers outright, so that way the county commissioners will hold title to this particular strip for the bridge.
Motion to approve.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed same sign, motion approved. We have, uh, United Consulting, an LPA consulting contract for the replacement of Bridge 80, County Road 300 West over Cornell Ditch, right-of-way services.
Again, United's working on this particular bridge, this is the, um, right-of-way agreement, which is a separate agreement from, um, the, uh, work, they're going to start proceeding with the appraisals and, uh, acquisition of right-of-way for this particular bridge.
Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed same sign, motion approved. Uh, United Consulting, an LPA consulting contract for the replacement of Bridge 110, County Road 600 East over Crooked Creek, right-of-way services.
Same as the case before, it's, they're entering in the right-of-way services so they can start the acquisition services for this particular bridge.
I move to.
I can second.
I move to approve the LPA consulting contract for replacement of Bridge 110.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed same sign, motion approved. Uh, NIPSCO Temporary Construction Work, uh, Space Easement Agreement along US 12 in Portage, uh, the city of Portage by the, by the, uh, port bridge. Where exactly is that?
This is on the south side of US 12 and it's just west of the, um, bridge that goes into the, um, spans over US 12 that goes into the port. This is an old subdivision in there, um, a number of people own parcels in there, I think even the Boy Scouts of America own some of the land in there, but this particular parcel that NIPSCO is interested in is owned by the county commissioners and it's the closest to US 12. They have a pipeline project that's going in there and they needed a temporary construction easement for staging, um, whether it's, uh, putting some of their pipes and storage of their pipes on that, so, um, they are, they obtained the easement, I think, not a few years back, but now they're coming back with another project and they're requesting to use the commissioners' property, uh, for staging on this particular project.
Entertained a motion?
So moved.
I second.
So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed same sign, motion approved. Thank you.
Okay. Item number 10 you have scratched.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Jody Jackson, Valparaiso Family YMCA. Hi, Jody. This is the time of year that Attorney McClure and I really look forward to.
I would just like to, um.
Jim and I are going to race.
Okay. I'll make sure we got, we got pictures.
You're going to need a faster than usual pace car.
Meh, maybe.
Uh, we have a request to host the 30, the 30th year, um, of the annual ringing in the spring 5K and 10K road race to be held Saturday, April 1st, 2023 at 7:45 AM to 10 AM. Uh, the race will start and finish on Cumberland Drive, uh, by the YMCA Pavilion.
It's, I don't know if it matters, but it's only a 5K.
You may have to leave that open a little longer than 10 AM.
They were hoping for longer.
If it was a 10K, we would have to. I move to approve the request by the Valparaiso Family YMCA.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed same sign, motion approved.
Thank you.
We've come to the end of our. Sure, yeah, yeah, I got.
Um, I've been getting a lot of calls lately about, um, concerns with puppy mill, um, operations, supporting those operations in Porter County, so I looked up a couple of other ordinances around the state and, you know, we have several, several rescues and shelters in Porter County that do fantastic work, we've got some really responsible breeders here, so there are plenty of places to find a pet. The two ordinances I looked at are the City of Carmel and an Indianapolis ordinance, so I was hoping to ask Scott to review those, I can send them to you after the meeting and maybe come up with something that we can deliberate, uh, after Scott gets a chance to flip it over.
That's a good idea.
Me too.
Great. I'll send them to you after the meeting.
Okay, any other matter, um, which may properly come before the Board of Commissioners, anybody in the public would like to. Sure, Dawn.
Dawn Miller, living in Valparaiso, just wanted to say thank you guys for making some of these meetings at 5:30, it has been a difficult task, I mean, every meeting at 10 AM. Um, the puppy mill, uh, puppy mill thing that you just brought up, that actually was brought up yesterday at the, um, the city council meeting.
Oh.
And there was a lot of opposition to it, so I hope that it's something that you guys can really get together and talk about because a lot of people are very disappointed and very upset about it, so.
There, there an opposition of passing an ordinance?
Well, I, I don't know, I, no, there an opposition of it actually already being here.
Oh, okay.
They definitely want something done because of, I don't know much about the puppy mills and whatnot, but it was, it was, yeah, frowned upon apparently, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Any, anybody else like to speak? Well, thank you very much and look forward to serving you throughout, uh, 2023, have a good day.